Could you see me? It's funny.
The nineteenth meeting of the twenty-third council will please come to order. All council members are present. Counselor Benton and Counselor Harris will be here in a few minutes. At this time, we will have a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Counselor Davis.
Thank you. Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Davis. Civic plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass from the council staff at the sign-up table. The council will take a dinner break at approximately 7:00 PM this evening. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and as respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks and please no applause or outbursts. The meeting will go much smoother if we are respectful of one another. We are now under proclamations and presentations. That is item three on the agenda. And the presentation will be from Gerald Romero, the Budget Officer, regarding the latest GRT report.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, Mr. Romero isn't in the room. Let me give him a quick reminder if we can come back to that item.
Okay, we'll go back to item three in just a moment. We are now under economic development discussions. There is none this evening. We are now under item five, administrative question-and-answer period. Counselors, are there any questions for the administration? See none, let's go and proceed. We are now on item six, that is the journal. I move approval of the September seventeenth journal. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Gibson. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. Is Mr. Romero back in the room? We will go back to item three, the presentation from Mr. Romero, the Budget Officer, regarding the latest grocery receipts tax report. Mr. Romero, go and proceed.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you. I apologize. I thought there might be a few proclamations tonight.[257.44][257.44](Laughter). Maybe hopeful thinking, wishful thinking. So, we received our GRT distribution on September seventeenth. This is July activity that we accrue for August, so we're in month two of this fiscal year. We had a fairly good distribution. The growth rate was 3.7 percent, bringing the cumulative growth to 1.2 percent for the grocery receipts distribution. Medical as a category or a sector was way up, way up, but we did have an anomaly last year in August, which was negative, and that's the reason you have such a high percentage growth rate there. But, sort of leading the pack were professional, scientific, and technical services as a sector, along with the food hold harmless, which, as you know, from the May and June distribution, it looks like that correction continues to show itself in our distribution from the state. Construction was down again and remains a bit of a drag on the growth rate. So, with that, I stand for questions.
Yes, Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I misheard you, misunderstood you. You said that there was a big bump for, what was it, medical this year? This, or over last year, at the same month?
Correct. So, remember, we get a hold harmless distribution from the state out of their general fund for changes they made in state law back in the mid-two thousands for food and for medical. The medical piece of hold harmless was up quite a bit percentage-wise compared to August a year ago, but it's really because August a year ago was so extremely negative. So, we don't really anticipate that that's driving the growth that you're seeing in the 1.2 percent cumulative.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? See none, let's go and proceed to item seven, that is communications and introductions. Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? Counselor Borrego.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of pulling R-75 out of the Finance and Government Operations Committee and placing it on tonight's agenda for final action. R-75 is to support New Mexico's development of a public option buy-in for healthcare coverage to better ensure affordability and choice.
We have a motion and a second for R-75, and that will require two-thirds votes. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries on a seven-to-one vote. Counselor Benton, he's not here yet, and I will go and read that then. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing R-85 on tonight's agenda for final action. R-85 is declaring a moratorium on the operation of any new shared bicycle or electric scooters services within the city of Albuquerque for a time period of three months or until a regulatory framework is established, whichever occurs first. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. This will also require two-thirds votes. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed. That carries unanimously. And this is also Counselor Benton. I move the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing R-86 and referring it to the Finance and Government Operations Committee. R-86 is declaring the intent of the city of Albuquerque, subject to the satisfaction of certain conditions, to issue industrial revenue bonds in the amount not to exceed $5,998,000 for the purpose of inducing Taskus USA LLC to locate a business service project in the city of Albuquerque. That will also require two-thirds votes. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed. That carries unanimously. And I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of placing EC-235 on tonight's agenda for final action. EC-235 is Honeywell International, Inc., Double Eagle Tool Hangar Lease and Agreement that will require two-thirds votes. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed. That carries unanimously. Counselor Harris, we are now under the letter of introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for approval of the letter of introduction.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the letter of introduction. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under reports of committees. There is none this evening. And now, we are on deferrals and withdrawals. Counselors, are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this time? I have one from approvals. That is item A, EC-215, Mayor's Appointment of Kira Grant to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. I move deferral until December the third. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. And from final actions, Counselor Gibson, item eight.
So, we're putting up, putting up, oh, fifty, mending the city of Albuquerque Code of Ordinance as Article Six, Chapter Thirteen, ROA nineteen ninety-four, the Homelessness Ordinance. I am going to move a referral until November fifth.
We have a motion and a second for a deferral of CS-3050 until November the fifth. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? See none, Counselor Vice President Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under item ten, that is general public comments. There will be a two-minute time limit. The light at the podium will be green for the first minute and a half, then the bell will ring and the light will turn yellow, indicating you have thirty seconds remaining. Once the light turns red, that means your time has expired, so please respect the two-minute time limit. Thank you. I will call the first five names, and once your name has been called, please come to the front. There is a seating available for you, and be prepared to speak. The first speaker is Don Schrader, followed by Richard Daye, followed by Rudolph Serrano, followed by Andreas Mata, followed by Judy Young.
Don Schrader, I support Medicaid for all, but with strong emphasis on preventing sickness by living healthy and on healing sickness naturally. Most sickness has two causes, not enough good stuff and too much bad stuff. Not enough healthy raw greens, vegetables, fruit, seeds, nuts. Not enough walking and other exercise. Not enough good sleep. Not enough peace and quiet. Not enough close friendships. Not enough sunshine. Not enough forgiveness. Not enough hugs. Not enough making love. Too much crap, sweets, white sugar. Sugar is the gateway drug. White flour, sodas, McDonald's, meat, dairy. Too many late nights, too much sitting, too much stress, too many grudges, too much noise, too much loneliness, too many bad chemicals, too many cigarettes, too many prescription drugs, too much cooked food, too much time inside buildings cut off from nature. Too much booze. I hate booze. I have not drunk one drop of that poison for many years. Having the government pay medical bills is not enough. I do my damnedest to avoid going to any doctor. Why suffer when we can prevent it?
Thank you. Next speaker, Richard Diab. Welcome.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Richard Diab. A year ago, I took ten men that were in the streets, homeless, that were locked up in the city jail, came out, had nowhere to go. I took these ten men, put them through the program, which I'm proposing here today. And today, these ten men have jobs, have been working on the job for one year. Two of them just put a down payment for a home. I'm proposing this program. This is a study that I've been doing for about two and a half years on eleven cities. Cities that are just like Albuquerque or maybe worse, and they have a lot of success in their programs. What they do is they develop these men with skills, but I took it a step further. I have fifteen companies that are willing to hire them if they go through our training. I'm bringing this to you because I sat with each member of those businesses and companies. I have call centers. I have insurance companies. I have real estate companies that are willing to do internships with these men. I have two men that are working in real estate, ready to get their license, but they were sleeping on our city streets. You just walk by them, think that you couldn't do nothing with them. We took them, we put them in a place to stay, we spent our own money. We trained them, we bought them clothes, put them in an apartment, all together, and today, they all live independently, and two of them are buying homes. I want you to look at this program, Mr. President. This is a lot of time and study. Albuquerque needs this. We have a lot of programs in place, but all they're doing is just keeping them there.
Thank you for your time, but I remember you coming down last year, and I was very impressed
Yes.
with your presentation and the work you have done. So, if you would, get a copy to each one of the council members.
Okay.
And also, we can maybe get a copy to Family and Community Services to look at expanding this program, because I was impressed when you made your presentation last year to the full council.
We've taken this a lot further than that. We actually proved it to work. So, may I leave this for you, sir?
You may do so. And we'll make copies for the council.
Thank you for hearing me. And I'll get copies for everybody as well.
Counselor Benton.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I think Counselor Benton has a question for you.
Yeah, just, not so much a question, but I agree with the president that Department of Family and Community Services is who's tackling this.
Yes.
We want to know your communications with them, but really feel like you should communicate with them, because they're the ones that are really coordinating our efforts on a daily basis with regard to the issue.
Family of Community Services? Family?
Department of Family and Community Services. And
Okay.
touched base with the lady that just waved her hand. That's the director.
Yesterday, I was contacted by the Greater Albuquerque Business Alliance. Someone called me, they saw my proposal somewhere, and we talked about it, and she spoke to me about getting together with me. But, I'll follow your advice, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
Next speaker is Rudolph Serrano, followed by Andreas Mata.
President, Counselors, and members of the council, members of the city, how are you? Well, I don't have too much time for this, but in the issue of Paradise Fields, the road that goes from Paradise to Nons, you know, there was a meeting, I'm not going to say names, I'm not going to attack anybody, we agree on that, but nobody showed up to the meeting. And I'm very concerned, because when we did that road, we promised the Indian community that we were not going to trespass more than two lines when we go through the petroglyphs. And I really believe that our relationship with the Indian community should be respected. There is an option in Irving where we can make an extra line in Irving. There is an option to put another line and make four lines Paradise Hills. I know my neighbors are going to kill me for that, but we have to consider, you know, our Indian community and sticking to our word. Plus, the little cajon is passed back and forth there, we're going to be killing nature. It's going to just break apart the petroglyphs from being something, an attraction to the city. But, the other thing is, we're in the Me Too movement, you know? We cannot have politics without having, you know, the Me Too movement involved. And I have seven complaints of sexual harassment in this city from women, you know, that during my massage time, sexually molested me, some of them, others offering sexual favors, money for sex, and I don't get any return in these ordeals. So, I'm going to come every week with which one of those cases for you guys to see where I'm coming from. First one, I just have fifteen seconds for it, Senator William Anderson's granddaughter, Argy Con Tomadis, grabbed my penis during a massage thing, you know? And I didn't give back the favor, because plus, it's something about respecting the profession, and so that's the first.
Thank you. Andres Mata, followed by Judy Young. Welcome.
Good evening, councilmen and women. My name is Andres Benito Mata. I live in the Barelas neighborhood, next to the Hispano Chamber of Commerce. I'm a convicted felon and a registered sex offender, and I take this time here to apologize to each and every one of you on behalf of myself. I look to be a rehabilitated citizen and be a contributing member of society. Since I live next adjacent to the Joseph J. Paca on the fourth and Barelas neighborhood, nearly every night this summer, I've had to call the police to the park and the chamber for everything ranging from trespassing, prostitution, drug use, drug dealing, domestic violence, vandalism, and I've been met with pushback from both the city and its police force with my efforts. I understand this is a time where the use of force by officers and the civil rights of transients are under heavy scrutiny on the national stage. I understand this administration's goal is to help the mentally ill, substance abusers, and less fortunate get the help they need to be contributing healthy citizens as well. But this matter is in regards to people who refuse help, manipulate others to enable their lifestyle, and cause chaos at every corner they occupy. I'm here to lead a call for action by private property owners to enforce criminal trespassing and for the McClendon lawsuit to be annotated to reflect such. I should not have to call officers at 1:00 AM for a screaming trespasser making threats to the neighborhood. I should not have to step outside my front door and watch a shooting with three people involved and immediately worry for my safety and wait twenty minutes for the officers to arrive. My neighbors and families should not have to worry about covering their family's eyes for the fear that someone might be shooting or heroin in public or having sex. Why? Because the law criminalizes all of that behavior, and I refuse to live in a city or neighborhood where criminality is accepted and passively endorsed. I ask the law enforcement, respect the rights of the private property owners first over people breaking the law blatantly who taunt us all implicitly and explicitly day after day. This is where the battleground for our city starts, changing the culture of lawlessness into a culture of civic pride, one property at a time, and making the correct annotations to such lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mata. Judy Young, followed by Elena Estrella, followed by Catherine Arden.
Could I pass these out? Good evening, councilors. Thank you so much for listening to a plan for a campus model. You heard about this on, about a month ago, and several of us have gotten together, and we have really looked at this seriously. And what we have discovered in that process is that several of the nonprofit organizations are duplicating services. And because they don't keep, it's not, there's not a data-driven plan in place, so the duplication, especially in food, is in place. So, no one really knows what the left hand and the right hand are doing, and everyone is just doing their own thing. And many of the transients, which probably right now, four thousand transients, are in Albuquerque, and they are going from neighborhood to neighborhood, and they are criminally really wrecking havoc on neighborhoods. And I know that as councilors, you don't want to enable that criminality. So, the plan that is proposed by the campus plan is that if all of the nonprofit organizations knew what they, what each one was doing so that there's not duplication, and so that the transients who are coming in to really take advantage of the community won't be allowed to do that, because there will be a data-driven program in place. So, I had the opportunity to talk with a man who is a transient this week, and he had a brand-new tent, he had a brand-new sleeping bag, he had a brand-new, and I said, wow, do you need all of this? And he says, no, I'm going to go sell it. He said, you know, I have a list here of all the places when I come into town where I can go to get what. And so, this is what happens. I mean, this is, you know, people who are contributing and think that they're doing good, but actually, it's being used to take advantage of the people.
Thank you. Miss Young, your time has expired, but thank you. Elena Estrella, welcome.
Can I pass these out to the councilors? Thank you. So, my name's Elena Estrella, and I want to start off with saying thank you to all of the councilors for your public service. And I'm passing out a copy of Counselor Harris's position on the tiny home villages in his district and throughout Albuquerque. And there are many compassionate and competent citizens that are currently volunteering their expertise and time to come up with solutions for homelessness and to shape the future of Albuquerque. And I've had the pleasure to be involved with many of these organizations. And throughout the discussions that I'm seeing with people very concerned about this issue in Albuquerque, that one of the themes that keeps running through businesses and homeowners is that the business districts in Albuquerque should be for businesses, and residential areas should be for the residents. So, many neighborhood organizations, coalitions, business groups are supporting a moratorium on the tiny home village, any tiny home villages in Albuquerque, as Counselor Harris has suggested in the letter that he wrote to his district. And also, to look hard at the campus model that was previously passed out to you. And to really work together with the people in the communities, I'm meeting some very, very awesome people who are willing to give their professional time for free to come up with solutions for the problems and to shape the future of Albuquerque. So, I'm just really asking, can you please involve us in what your plans are for the future? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Catherine Arden, followed by Mayra Acevedo, followed by Robert Vick, followed by Connie B. Hill. And again, once your name has been called, please come to the front and have a seat and be prepared to speak. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you very much for having me tonight. I have several questions that I would like to just ask the questions and then hear any of your responses. My first one is about public restrooms and where the city is on, especially downtown, because I happen to live downtown, about not just a fancy porta potty kind of thing, but actual public restrooms. Another is, I saw the list on the city site for red boxes for needle collection, but I didn't see any for the Robinson Park or Roosevelt Park, and they have lots of needles. Another is wondering where, as the police come and do their thing downtown with the downtown substation, where are they sending the homeless people to besides into someone else's neighborhood? I have a fourth question, but sadly, I always forget that fourth one. But I would like to know about these other things.
Again, we're here today to take general public comment. I think our staff can, has gotten these questions, and we can probably get those back to you as quickly as possible, but we'll give you one of our staff's cards, and they will respond back to you.
All right.
But thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayra Acevedo, followed by Robert Vick, followed by Connie B. Hill, followed by Adrian Carver. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, county, city councilors, and my name is Mayra Acevedo. I'm a community advocacy manager with Partnership for Community Action, a local nonprofit in the South Valley, and I'm here today to support Resolution 1875. Current, in the past, I had been a recipient of the Medicaid program from early years to, up to eighteen, and I'm now fortunate to actually have healthcare coverage through my employer. I work with a lot of our families that are within the city and also Burnley County, and on a daily basis, I see them making choices such as paying bills and not really taking on, taking care of their chronic disease or condition due to our limited access to healthcare options here in our state. We have a hundred and eighty thousand families throughout the, throughout New Mexico that don't have health coverage, and Resolution 1875 provides that option, provides us an innovative way to think about how can we cover those a hundred and eighty thousand families and making sure that we're looking at it at a preventative way and making sure that we're looking at the needs. And today, I'm here to ask for your support and consideration to vote yes for Resolution 1875, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mayla. Next speaker, Robert Vick, followed by Connie B. Hill, followed by Adrian Carver. Welcome.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you for giving me the time to talk to you about the barbed wire issue. That's the reason why I'm up here right now, and Counselor Davis has a presentation that I've given to him about what the problems that we're having there on Central and Wyoming area, and I've only concentrated on my own neighborhood, but I know that it's a problem that's going on throughout the city. The property owners need to be able to protect their property when the city can't do that at this point. We're at a bad, we're in a bad situation right now where there's so much crime that's going on out there to property owners that the police can't get there. They're only taking care of violent crimes. They're not able to get, they don't have the time. They're not able to get, they don't have the time or the resources to get to the other crimes that are going on now that's costing us thousands and thousands of dollars. So I appreciate you considering the new bill for this ordinance and the moratorium that you're putting on it. And I really think that the law needs to change because in the two years that you've given us, I don't think that we're gonna have it under control. I pray that we do, but we're gonna need some, I think that there's gonna have to be some changes in the future that'll allow that when, when crime goes down, that we can do something about not having barbed wire, having other ways of controlling access to our properties. But we need to be able to protect our families and, and our customers and, and our property. I know that the, that I personally am gonna not need as much because we're making changes to our property that it's gonna help, but I know that a lot of people in my neighborhood need this, especially the car lots and stuff. They really need to be able to keep those vagrants off of the property and stealing batteries from the car lots and things like that. But thank you so much for your time and thank you for considering this.
Thank you. Councillor Davis?
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. Vick, I don't know if you'll be able to stay with us till later this evening when we get here, but I wanted to address your question you brought to us earlier. Our legislation tonight, and if it passes, includes the moratorium, but it also includes language that directs us to evaluate this rule as part of our annual rule review process over the next couple of years. And so there will be an opportunity down the road to do more of that rethinking of this policy, but I wanted to clarify that for you because you asked and I didn't have a good answer for you earlier.
Great. Thank you very much. I really appreciate that. Thank you again.
Next speaker is Connie B. Hill, followed by Adrian Carver, followed by Chris Darkel. Welcome.
Okay. I recognize three of you because three of you took the time to meet our business group. Greater Albuquerque Business Alliance is now 40 businesses and growing. And we're not going away because we are a strong group and we have teamed with the Four Hills Neighborhood. And we have, and we now have a volunteer architect. And I'm in discussions with a large private property owner to get a piece of property to create a campus. And we are serious and we would love to work with you. If you can imagine that we are businesses dedicated to create a campus for the city of Albuquerque without taxpayers' dollars, using the community and everyone participating. Okay, so we're still on the right track. I would love to meet with any of you who haven't met with us yet. We did meet with Trudy. We met with Diane and Clarissa came to our meeting. We really appreciate that. We'd love to still meet with Ken, Dawn, Isaac, you haven't met with us, Cynthia, I haven't met you yet, Brad, and Patrick. Okay? We're serious and we, we are going to create this with or without your help and I hope we have your help. So let's step backwards. Exhibit K is the plan for the St. Martin's project that got $12 million. Okay, this is a neighborhood agreement. The top line says, "The city and city developers shall agree to a robust plan for neighborhood and community notification and engagement." And then there's really nothing else. And this is the agreement between the St. Martin's project, $12 million, and us.
Would you please address the council? Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm just talking to the audience. So this is it and it's too small and we need, you need to please work with the businesses because we are also part of the neighborhood. Okay? The second page says neighborhood, I can't read it, neighborhood connection within 30 days, the good neighbor agreement. Mr. Benton, we want the good neighbor agreement because right now, there's a tent at healthcare for the homeless and it's gonna continue.
Connie, my apologies, but your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Councillor Borrego.
I'm sorry, ma'am, but I didn't have another exhibit except for this exhibit. So I don't know what you're referring to.
Connie, go ahead and come back up. I think she has a question for you.
I only had one exhibit that, and you were referring to a second one?
Yes, and I will definitely, you all have this because this is the, you know, the agreement between St. Martin's that you're working on right now, the neighborhood agreement, but I can send it to you. And then this, this is basically Exhibit K, which is in the back of that document. But this is what the city is working on right now, as I understand, Mr. Benton, the agreement with St. Martin's on their development of the 42-unit housing project. So I can make sure that everyone has it. So I thought you knew about it.
Go ahead and proceed. Councillor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. And one thing that in terms of protocol down here is that normally we don't get interrogated from people who are asking, who are speaking to us, but we want to listen to you. So what normally that we do, and I'm sure councillor Benton's a policy enlasse, would love to talk to you, but just make an appointment with him, I think, talk to Diane Dolan, and we'll be happy to answer your questions or talk to any of our staff or any of the administration.
I have tried multiple times, sir, and I haven't been able to.
Councillor Benton.
The issues that are being addressed are already now in the administration's hands. We're not controlling whether there's a tent somewhere or a development agreement that's in the administration's hands. So those are the people you should be talking to.
Well, right now, the neighbors, okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, Adrian Carver.
Thank you, Mr. President and councilors. My name is Adrian Carver. I'm here in support of R-75. As the executive director of Equality New Mexico, which is the state's largest LGBTQ advocacy organization, we advocate for initiatives that support affordable healthcare for New Mexican families. We support a public buy-in option because LGBTQ New Mexicans, especially transgender people of color, have higher uninsured rates when compared to others and are disproportionate, have disproportionately low health outcomes. For sexual and gender minority New Mexicans, which is the new term for LGBTQ, it's the academic term, access to healthcare is critical. LGBTQ New Mexicans experience disparity in health outcomes because of historical trauma, violence, systemic reinforcement of heteronormativity, all as root causes of these disparities. In Burnaleo County, in Albuquerque, and in New Mexico, all our families, regardless of what they look like, who we love, are all deserving of access to healthcare. Nobody should go without healthcare because they can't afford it. So I'm here today to ask for your support on R-75, which is a public buy-in for all, public buy-in option for all New Mexicans, including queer and trans Burkinios. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Chris Darrel, followed by Tim Harder, followed by Marina Rodriguez.
City councilors, good evening. My name's Chris Diarco. I live in the Ridgecrest, Parkland Hills neighborhood. And since this is a comments, any questions I pose, please assume they are rhetorical. I'm greatly opposed to O-1829 that Mr. Davis has proposed to bring electric scooters into the city of Albuquerque for one reason and one reason only. I'm waiting for crumbling infrastructure in his own district to be addressed properly. He does that, I'll vote for anything he asks me to, including parks bonds where I was promised to park with a playground in my neighborhood, the third oldest neighborhood in Albuquerque. But our biggest problem in that neighborhood right now, in case any of you don't watch Channel 13, ADA-compliant sidewalks. The project was started two and a half years ago. They did half of our neighborhood. They stopped halfway through, conveniently under the previous administration, right about the time the ART project started. And everybody said, no, they didn't pull the funding. Well, we got money for ART, so all the people that lied to me can stop and finish the sidewalks. You can't walk through my neighborhood without falling down. You can't get a handicapped person through my neighborhood. We have wheelchair ramps that are blocked by utility poles, they're blocked by stop signs. I talked to P&amp;M, they said, all the city needs to do when they redo those sidewalks is call us, we'll move them over two feet. But nobody ever did that. First project was contracted to TLC. They said it got pulled, that's all they could tell me. This is two and a half years ago. We have streets in my neighborhood that haven't been paved in 30 to 50 years. I understand that Trumbull has problems, but I don't think that repaving the streets is gonna convince a 16-year-old to not go out and sell drugs and go back to school. But I think the third oldest neighborhood in Albuquerque deserves a little respect.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tim Harder, followed by Marina Rodriguez. And then we have Mabumba Panya. If your name has been called, please come to the front. I hope I didn't butcher that name. And then Colleen Acock. And then we've got David Wallace. And go ahead and state your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Marina Rodriguez. I'm a parent leader with Parent Reaching Out and I'm a mother of five children. I'm here today to support Resolution 1875. I currently don't have health insurance, but, but some of my children do through Medicaid. Daddy has supported our families, our family greatly. Through current, through my current situation, healthcare is the last thing I consider since it's very expensive and I'm unable to qualify to any program. Healthcare is a very important aspect for our self-care and without it, we cannot support our family needs. I believe that the public option for a Medicaid buy is a solution for all the 180,000 families in our community who don't have any health insurance coverage. Thank you for your time and I please ask you for your vote on this Resolution 1875. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Next speaker, Mabumba Panya.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Mabuba and I'm a case manager and community organizer at New Mexico Asian Family Center. I'm here today to support the Medicaid buy-in plan for the city of Albuquerque and I'm asking you to please vote for this. I'm going to share a short story about, to give an example why it's important for, to have Medicaid buy-in option. An Afghan family won the green card lottery and they moved from Kabul, Afghanistan to Albuquerque in 2016. They moved in an apartment complex on Montgomery with the support of Afghan community. They were still struggling to learn about our system here, to learn English and to find jobs because, as you probably know, they cannot apply for benefits before five years. On top of all the struggles, their wife gets very sick, chronic stomach pain. They go to Loveless Women's Hospital on Montgomery because it was the closest to their apartment. They find out that she has appendicitis. She needed surgery, she gets hospitalized and she get the surgery. After staying in the hospital for a few nights, she goes home. While recovering, they get a huge bill from hospital for $40,000. They had no idea how to pay for this. So the husband takes the bill to Human Services, the only place that he knew, he knew that time, and he asked them for support. They took care of the bill. This was a huge relief for this family. Now the husband have insurance from his job, but the wife don't have any kind of insurance and she's just praying to, don't get sick. Because of this, I think no one should have to go without medical care because they cannot afford it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Colleen Acock, followed by David Wallace, followed by Lan Senna, followed by Judith Go ahead and proceed.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Colleen Acock. Mr. Benton, I'm sorry that you would admonish a city volunteer and choose to pass the buck as you did. You may not see that issue as your own responsibility, but I hope you see the issue I'm here to talk about as your responsibility. I'm here to talk about the 10-year anniversary failure of the East Gateway Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Plan, known as the MRA Plan, that this city council passed in the year 2008. In that, you tasked the Albuquerque Planning Department to carry out the plan and follow it by the MR code. To this date, the only visible evidence of this realm of improvement has been a center lane on Central that you've turned into a median and it will probably be destroyed if ART ever comes down that way. Franklin Plaza is still the eyesore that it was that you noted 10 years ago. And in the plan, you documented the need for a museum and visitor center for an area that now you destroy, a historic property, to put a 5.5 million community center that's only a soccer field away from a duplicate community center. No one in these neighborhoods wants that center and you know it. What they do want is a substation on Central. Your MR plan, MRA plan, proposed that. We've not seen that. This year, our balloon visitors have come every year since we moved here in 2007. I'm sorry, I didn't know the area would be blighted by 2008 and continue on for 10 years, but they have been told not to come here. And they will not come here, they will not bring their balloons and they will not bring their crew because the city is too dangerous and they've been given notes in Austin and Central Texas to avoid Albuquerque at all costs. I won't go into the tiny home plans, but that violates the MR code as well. If the goal of the city council and the MRA plan was to foster jobs, deter crime, promote small business and restaurants, and stimulate economic growth through tourism and community pride, then both the city and the county leaders have failed us. Do your jobs.
Next speaker is David Wallace, followed by Lan Senna.
My name is David Wallace and I'll thank you all for your service. And I'd like to thank you for this extra police class that's gonna be, give us 40 new officers who all have experience and are wanting to come here. And I would hope we would see more of that in the future. As a matter of fact, I asked our local representative, Jim Dines, about the issue of getting retired officers allowed to come back to work for the police department. He says that comes up in the legislature and he's in the judiciary committee every time and it just doesn't seem to get passed. And so I'd like to encourage you to keep pushing for that. And I will sure be happy whenever we get that ACLU issue on panhandlers settled so we can do something about all the panhandlers that are on all the corners up in, up in East Central. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lan Senna, followed by Judith Viegas. And the last speaker will be Chadron Kidwell. Welcome.
Hello, members of the council, thank you. My name is Lan Senna and I'm here today to support New Mexico's development of a public option buy-in or R-1875. I'm currently battling stage four cancer for the third time. Living with cancer presents many challenges, some in which you may not assume. Sure, I have pain, nausea, but good days while having cancer does not necessarily mean a day free of pain. And a bad day does not necessarily mean a day full of pain. I have good days and bad days, as we all do. But some of my worst days, you may not expect, does not include that I recently learned that the cancer has spread to more lymph nodes and to my lungs. Or to the day that I learned that I do not have a bone marrow donor. Some of my worst days include the days I learned that a fellow cancer fighter died because they could not afford their care. Those days, those that died because they could not afford their care include my grandfather, a nurse, and a policymaker's family member or aunt. Please do not make me one of them. When we seek a world free of cancer and a cure for cancer, what world do we live in when we cannot afford it? I urge you to, in your support for passing R-1875, because all of our families are equal and deserving healthcare. If you have any doubts or reservations in how that Medicaid buy-in would impact cancer patients like me, I invite you all to my chemotherapy session in about two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Lan.
Mr. President.
Councillor Davis.
Lan, we're not allowed, Mr. President, thank you. Our rules don't allow you to speak any longer, but I can ask you a question and then you get to do that. Would you remind us all, you spoke about this before, but there's an opportunity for folks to sign up to be a potential donor, bone marrow donor. I know I've done it and some of the councilors have done it and I'm disappointed to hear that perhaps that wasn't your answer. But I learned after doing that, that it might be the answer for my neighbor who was recently diagnosed with a similar form of cancer and is looking for a similar donor. And I think there are a lot of folks out there who could help if they only knew more about how easy it was to sign up. Would you explain to us in our question and answer, not in your testimony, how folks can learn how to sign up to be a donor for folks like you in our community?
Sure, and thank you, councillor Davis. It's very simple to sign up to be a bone marrow donor. It's a swab of the cheek. It's about a five-minute consent form that you fill out. You can order the kit and it's delivered directly to you. The materials that they are collected are used specifically for the purpose of a bone marrow marrow donation. 14,000 people a year need a bone marrow donor, and half of them die because they cannot find one. It's for all cancer patients that have a blood cancer and also blood disorder, in which one is diagnosed every three minutes, and this is very easy and an easy solution. It's a pain, well, the donor does not necessarily go through the procedure that most people think. It's actually just like donating plasma or donating blood. And again, to sign up to be a donor, it's just a swab of the cheek. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Counselor Borrego.
I just want to thank you, ma'am, for coming today and speaking. I know it's difficult for you, because sharing your story is not an easy task. And I applaud you, and I just wish that God would bless you and that we can find a cure for cancer soon.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Borrego. Thank you, Lan. Next speaker is Judith Viegas. Welcome.
Good afternoon, thank you, Mr. President, council members. Good afternoon, my name is Judith Viegas. I'm a family and community leader for Partnership for Community Action. Few months ago, I was diagnosed with influenza type B. I spent three hours in emergency room. A few weeks after, I got a bill for $16,000, which means I have to pay about $6,000 an hour for being in the hospital, which is almost a year of my salary. New Mexico, being one of the states with higher rates in the nation of deaths caused by drugs, alcohol, and suicide, we need to raise our voice on a national level, leading the change and supporting this resolution, R 1875. It's about time for us to take New Mexico to a different level. Our community deserves quality, affordable coverage. I ask you for your vote in this initiative to put New Mexico in a better place. As immigrants, we use the saying, "Aquí estamos, y no nos vamos," which means, "Here we are, and we're not going anywhere." We are here to make positive changes for this community, to keep opening doors for our families and our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker will be Chadron Kidwell. Welcome.
Good evening. Counselor Benton, I don't live or vote in your district, but I work downtown, and my kids go to school downtown. And I wanted to give you some feedback on the proposed restriping of lead and coal downtown. I don't know if you were able to enjoy the rollout a couple of weeks back, but the traffic backed up over the railroad tracks, across Broadway, and up the hill. And then afterwards, I spoke, after I figured out what all that was, because nobody knew what it was. I spoke to parents and staff at Coronado Elementary, I spoke to parents and staff at Washington Middle School, and I spoke to people I know who actually lived downtown in the neighborhood. Everyone, everyone hates that plan, to make lead and coal one-way through downtown, and I feel like you are solving a problem that doesn't exist. There's a, Silver is one block over, and that makes a nice bike route, and we don't need parking on lead and coal, there is sufficient parking across downtown. What downtown needs is a route for people to get across it, and that has historically been lead and coal. And if you want to, if you increase congestion downtown, people are just going to avoid coming down there, and I don't think that's what anybody wants. So I would urge you to rethink that restriping project, which I've discovered in the news. So if I'm mistaken about what that's going to be, that's what I read when I finally was able to figure out why all that closure was.
Counselor Benton.
You may have misspoke inadvertently, but you said that they'd be converted to one-way streets.
That was what I read in the newspaper.
No, that's not correct. It's not, that's not part of the plan.
Okay, well.
So, the test was taken down, because it wasn't really informing us, after two days, it was clear what that test was. The test remained in place on coal, on those three blocks, so.
Okay.
And performed quite well, so.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes general public comments. We are now under announcements. That is item 11. Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. There'll be a Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting on Monday, October 8th, at 5:00 PM, in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There will be a Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on Wednesday, October 10th, at 5:00 PM, in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
There will be a joint meeting of the Board of Directors for the Mesa del Sol Public Improvement Districts 1 through 5, and the Mesa del Sol Tax Incremental Development Districts 1 through 5. The meeting is Wednesday, October 3rd, at 12:00 noon, in the council committee room on the ninth floor. And there will be a Lower Petroglyph Public Improvement District Board of Directors Special Meeting on Thursday, October 4th, at 10:00 AM, in the council committee room on the ninth floor. And now we are under public hearings. That is item 12, AC 10. That is the South Broadway Neighborhood Association, appeals the decision of the zoning hearing examiner, and I will turn this over to Mr. Melendez to explain.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. The issue in this appeal is whether a small used car lot should be conditionally permitted at 1806 Broadway Boulevard Southeast. The zoning hearing examiner determined that the car lot should be approved at this location. However, the South Broadway Neighborhood Association appealed that decision. The council referred this appeal to its land use hearing officer, who recommends that the appeal be denied, that the zoning hearing examiner's decision be affirmed, and that the conditional use permit for the car lot be approved. The land use hearing officer determined that the ZHE should be affirmed, because the ZHE adequately addressed many of the neighborhood concerns by limiting the approval to only the two lots comprising 1806 Broadway, by requiring that no cars be parked off-site, by ordering that the business get a permit for an existing fence which was erected at the site, and also the conditional use permit is limited only to vehicle sales, no repairs would be permitted at that site, and also the ZHE conditioned that no fuels be stored at that site to promote safety of the use. For those reasons, the land use hearing officer recommends that the conditional use permit be approved. Tonight, you're considering only whether to accept or reject the recommendation of the land use hearing officer. If you have questions, I'll do my best to answer those from the record. If you feel like you need more information before making this decision, you may reject the hearing officer's recommendation, and we'll schedule a hearing for this matter at a later date.
Are there any questions for Mr. Melendez? Counselor Gibson, and then Counselor Jones.
No, I don't have a question for our staff attorney. However, I would move that we accept Luho recommendations and the findings.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones to accept Luho's findings and recommendations. Any questions? Counselor Benton.
Yeah, Mr. Melendez, so as far as the legal standards, the Luho, the Luho felt that the legal standards, that this would not be injurious, had been met.
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, that's correct. There are two standards for a conditional use permit at this location, that it not be injurious to the community, nor that it be injured by the surrounding land uses. The ZHE found that there wouldn't be no injury under either of those tests, and the Luho determined there was sufficient evidence for that. Essentially, at the ZHE hearing, neighborhood representatives had concerns about various aspects of the use, potential crime related to a new use, additional car lots coming in if this one was approved, some of the safety concerns that the ZHE conditioned about traffic, parking of cars, and fuel storage, and auto repairs. However, the ZHE did not find evidence that any of those concerns would manifest themselves, and therefore made a finding that it would not be injurious to the neighborhood. The Luho determined that that was an acceptable rationale based on the evidence presented at the hearing.
But the neighborhood did not just express concern, they opposed it at the ZHE as well as at the Luho.
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, the neighborhood opposed it at the ZHE, and then ultimately appealed and opposed before the Luho.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Are there any other questions or comments? See none. We have a motion to accept the land use hearing officer's recommendations and findings. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed?
No.
That carries on a 7 to 2 vote. We are now on item B, AC 11. That is Ramon and Anna Padilla, appeals the zoning hearing examiner. This matter has been withdrawn by the appellant. I move the withdrawal be approved. On the previous vote, on AC 10? All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed?
No.
That carries on a 7 to 2 vote. Okay, let's move on to item B, AC 11. That is Ramon and Anna Padilla, appeals the zoning hearing examiner. This matter has been withdrawn by the appellant. I move the withdrawal be approved. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Davis. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. We are now on item C, that is AC 12. Michael Voorhees appeals the decision of the planning department. This matter has been withdrawn by the appellant. I move the withdrawal be approved. We have a motion and a second by Council Vice President Harris. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That passed unanimously. We're... We need to go back to Q and A. Counselor Harris was not here when that item came up. So let's go back there, and then we'll move to item 13.
And I apologize, my fellow councilors, but I couldn't get here on time, and we moved very quickly through the early part of the agenda. But one of my constituents at a neighborhood meeting said that there's a big delay in getting through to 311, and I don't know if anyone else has had that problem, heard of that, that sometimes people have been on hold for a long time, and they just can't get through, and they're frustrated. Luckily, someone was at the neighborhood meeting from the administration, talking about the app. I guess that can be helpful, sometimes you don't need to call. But anyway, Ms. Nayer, is there, you get any update on that?
Council President Sanchez, Counselor Harris, I haven't gotten an update on it yet, but we'll let you know as soon as we do whether there were any technical difficulties with the line over the weekend, or if there are any slowdowns in general. I can tell you that about, only about one-third of the 311 requests are now coming through the phone, and we've gotten about two-thirds through the app, so the more we can move to the app, the less we'll have these problems.
Okay, maybe I get back to me next meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, I'm glad you asked the question, Council Vice President Harris. I needed to catch my breath there. Okay, let's move on to item 13, approvals. That is item B, that is EC 235. Honeywell International Incorporated Double Eagle II Hangar Lease Agreement. I move approval. We have a motion and a second by Counselor Penya. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under final actions, and what I have done is I've moved item B and G to be heard together, and then we will vote on each item, but let's hear from both sponsors of the bill. Let's first go to Counselor Davis, committee substitute O-29.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I'll let our staff present on this as we need, but I'll move committee substitute O-29 as substituted. It amends the traffic code to implement minimum standards and shared traffic transportation programs as they relate to operation and maintenance in the public right-of-way. All those fancy words means, these are the new regulations that would govern the use of shared transportation and shared electric scooters that were like those demonstrated at Civic Plaza earlier today.
Did you want to go and move the floor amendment in the packet?
I will, thank you, Mr. President, thank you for that reminder. Mr. President, I would move a floor amendment, it's amendment number one, it's available in the packet for this item. It's a couple of technical amendments that were brought up after some additional comment from the administration, and so I'd move amendment number one.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones for a floor amendment number one to committee substitute O-29. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed? Okay, and we have two individuals signed up to speak on this agenda item. First is Tim Harder.
Mr. President, I believe we have a second amendment as well.
Let's go and get the amendment done first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. Floor amendment number two, I would move, it proposes to add minimum data and privacy standards. These are now becoming standard in these deals where we're using apps in the public right-of-way, and also, or in public deals, to allow the city to examine and audit the use of these vehicles. And so I would move amendment number two in the packet.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones. Any questions? See none, all those in favor of floor amendment number two to committee substitute O-29, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, those opposed say no. That carries unanimously. And we have two individuals that are signed up to speak, Tim Harder and Chris Dureko.
Good evening, my name is Tim Harder. I am a government affairs for Bird Scooters for the Southwest United States. So I want to say thank you to the City of Albuquerque, Councilmember Davis, for moving this ordinance forward. We were going to launch on the City of Albuquerque, but we held off because you guys moved so fast, so it's to you that we're setting a model here. Using NACTO's definitions of shared mobility devices is a big win for cities, so I really want to highlight the work that you've all done on this ordinance, and the staff has done on this ordinance. Our one ask tonight is that you direct staff to move forward with this as soon as possible, so that we can bring this affordable transportation to Albuquerque. I just want to say thank you, and I'm here to answer any questions if they arise.
Counselor Vice President Harris.
Excuse me, could you come back? So, as this bill is being developed by Counselor Davis, I was actually a little confused, because I didn't understand what the problems could be. I guess there have been problems in other cities of these people who run these businesses not being good neighbors. However, one thing I think my constituents don't understand is, I think they think that Counselor Davis is trying to bring scooters here, and I think he's just trying to regulate them, because they're coming anyway. So is that your understanding, that you guys are coming?
They're coming, yep, but regulations, smart regulations, which are proposed for you tonight, we're supportive of, so.
Okay, so if I vote for this bill, it's not because I want scooters to come, I'm just voting for good regulations because they're coming anyway.
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And I have one question also, Tim, and this is in regards to the cost to the City of Albuquerque. There is no cost to the taxpayers of the City of Albuquerque, is that correct?
That's correct, and starting on day one, when we launch our scooters, we'll actually be paying the city every day to be using the right public right-of-way, so you'll be making money.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker is Chris Darko. Okay, so he's left. That concludes the public comments on this agenda item. Before we take a vote, let's go to Counselor Benton and item G, R-85.
Mr. President, so I really have two related items in the packet for tonight. One is this competing amendment, R 1885, which simply declares a moratorium on the operation of any new service within the city of this type, for a time period of three months or until a regulatory framework is established, whichever occurs first. So that is a possibility that I'm just putting out there. As was stated by the gentleman from Bird, they're coming anyway, they held off, because Counselor Davis got working on this, and I appreciate the work he's done, he's done a lot of good work on this. I support everything that's in his bill, with the exception of the part that says it will go into effect in five days. I strongly feel that our public right-of-ways are a sensitive matter, and we've talked about them in all sorts of ways over the years here on the council dais, whether we're talking about complete streets, or downtown walkability, or changes that some people may not like, that other people may like, et cetera, that the public rights of way that the city owns are because of our complete streets ordinance, or implicit anyway, I would hope, without a complete streets ordinance, therefore the use and benefit of everyone in the city. We also use our public rights of way for utility passage through, from one part of town to another. So there are all sorts of private uses of the right-of-way, but we try to be very careful as a city about how we regulate those uses. And, again, as was stated, it's coming, and we've got to do something about it. I am not of the opinion that we're ready to put something in effect. I think there's nothing wrong with us laying down a marker, if you will, and saying, passing this bill, the moratorium is just a backup, that's all it is. But I think Counselor Davis's bill, as I said, I don't think there's anything wrong with it. I would like to see that be a starting point for where we are. I think we still have some ways to go. The changes that are occurring throughout the country with regard to this issue have been at a rapid, rapid pace, and it's happening rapidly. If you look at the media on it, there hasn't been much media on it, because it's happening so quickly, or at least not in the heartland, in places like New Mexico, certainly on the two coasts, these... These, this mobility option is receiving a lot of discussion and a lot of back and forth. I believe California, if I'm not mistaken, just repealed the requirement that you ride a helmet while using one of them. My understanding is that California does not allow them on a sidewalk. I could be wrong about that, but that's my understanding. We, I was a sponsor of an amendment to the bicycle code several years back, which clarified the behavior of cyclists on a sidewalk, which I'm not, I don't necessarily endorse, but that had been commonly accepted as being okay on a sidewalk. But a lot more expectations were established under that amendment to the traffic code. I would not purport to say that that traffic code has been enforced by anyone, the sidewalk bicycle traffic code. And that's for, in over 10 years of its being in place. Enforcement is an issue whether we're talking about traffic enforcement, which we're still rebuilding our police department right now. And I really appreciate the chief's new emphasis on traffic enforcement, but it's still not where we need it to be. Same thing goes for zoning enforcement. We're talking about zoning being the enforcing agency with regard to how these are placed in the public right-of-way or at least through the planning department, I should say. Those type of enforcement officers and so forth would be charged with regard to just people parking these devices in the wrong places. So the list is fairly long of concerns that are being discussed around the country. Public health is certainly a concern. The emergency room visits have shot up in every place where it's been monitored since these programs have gone into effect. The mechanical qualifications of the people who are maintaining these have been called into question in some places. And I, again, I accept that, I accept that they're coming, right? And that's the narrative, that they're coming, we've got to do something right now to allow them to operate and to be, to be legal on our streets. And I know that there's an indemnity clause in the contracts that they're using. I don't know whether that indemnity clause, I'm interested to hear perhaps from our legal department whether such an indemnity clause protects the city from lawsuit under these same contracts. If we allow the franchise to occur, if we allow, I'm using franchise term loosely, but if we allow this to occur on our city streets, what is the responsibility that the city is taking on? That's certainly a question I'd like to hear tonight answered if there are answers to it. But to have them on the sidewalk, I question. Let's just go back a little bit in history, right? Because these are being talked about akin to cycling, to bicycling. Bicycling exists, pre-existed the automobile, all right? When, at that time, if we go back in history, you know, horses were on the roadway, then bicycles were on the roadway, then cars were on the roadway. So there's been a gradual acceptance of these modes. And at first, yeah, sometimes they were, there was no regulation and they were out of control. And people, you know, it was, it's well documented that when the automobile started out, it was pretty chaotic. But we're hopefully further along than that right now. This is introducing an entire new mode of transportation on the streets. We've had a long time to figure out all our traffic codes for automobiles and a long time to figure out those for cycling. But there's some real concerns about this. And I fear that essentially a city endorsement of this, which is what we're almost talking about, the endorsement of the system, acceptance and endorsement of it may create some entitlement, some private entitlement, or at least a sense of such. And that's the thing about, about making special accommodations for something new that comes along that's a business. Our Americans with Disabilities Act backlog in the City of Albuquerque for public infrastructure is over $2 billion. I can't remember the exact figure, but it was at least $2 billion when we were asked, we asked for that estimate when we were talking about the ADA transition plan. What does that mean with regard to these vehicles on sidewalks? And, you know, we could talk about the health thing, that's more of a, just something that's disappointing because we've been talking a lot lately about encouraging people to walk and bike and live an active life and not just a passive life that's supplemented. But that's an entirely different issue, I think, you know, we're not trying to micromanage people's lives. But the sidewalk is a public realm and it was created for pedestrians, let's face it. It was not created for bicyclists or scooters, in my opinion. And maybe that's something else that still needs to be discussed. But when our bike share program that we indirectly have supported at the Council of Governments was created, it was rolled out as a pilot. It was created and discussed publicly as a public amenity. And it had a pilot period. This, if we pass this tonight and it goes into effect in five days, we're not, we're not doing this with a pilot. We're letting, we're letting the private entity, entities come in and establish the paradigm that we're going to live under.
Councilor Benton, before you continue, do you want to move this bill?
I'm not going to move, can we move both bills simultaneously, it's okay? I don't believe so.
Mr. President, only one question can be on the floor at one time.
Okay.
What I would like to move is amendment number three, which is in your packet.
We have a motion, do we have a second? For lack of a second, that amendment fails. Let's go back to Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President, and Councilor Benton, I'm not opposed to that idea. I just want to address if it's okay, I took just a couple of notes, I wanted to address your points in time as succinctly as I can. And I think if we still find a reason, I'd be happy to support that with you. Very quickly, I just want to clarify, and I've asked Ms. Petromore to be here with us tonight to help us just a little bit. On the five-day, five-day sort of enactment legislation or language, that's the standard enactment legislation and standard language we have in all of our legislation that simply says this is in effect in five days after the mayor signs it and it's been published. What it means essentially is, once this is in place, it would be illegal to operate these shared scooter projects without a permit, five days after sort of being enacted. That said, it still depends on the planning department to develop a permitting process. And so there is effectively a moratorium until the planning department is able to publish a permitting process and implement it. And so I'm not sure that, in my personal opinion, and I welcome Mr. Campbell who's here with us and has done some extensive work with his department on addressing some of these issues. I'm not sure this is necessary mainly because I think the five days is important so that no one can drop these on us without us knowing and be unregulated. And number two, I think the timing of that permitting process is sufficient at the planning department. Specifically to your question about that, I want to point out that there is language here, that the permitting language is pretty vague. But it does include on purpose to allow the planning department to be flexible to protect the city's needs. But it does include language that allows the planning department to deny an application for any reason so that if someone has been a bad actor with these programs in other cities, that would provide justification for us to deny their permit and also for us to cancel if someone is not complying with the rule so that it's not a right to keep this permit, but one you have to continue to earn every day. As it comes to enforcement, we copied, in fact, the bicycle legislation that you mentioned as the example because these are not regulated, as you and I talked about and we know. The traffic code created 120 years ago never contemplated electric scooters. And so we're crafting them on best legislation from NACTO around modeling the bicycle code so that where there are bike lanes that we've all worked on, they're required to be used. And if they're on a sidewalk, they are treated just like a bicycle, limited, adding that it limits their speed and also has an option, both of the providers that at least have been here so far have community complaint options so that people can complain absent of police or code enforcement or DMD or whoever's doing enforcement against a particular user. And because the equipment is GPSed and tagged to a user, if you drive your scooter, receive, if they receive a complaint at 1:33 in the afternoon at a particular address, they know who that user was and could remove them from their system if they find that they're a violator. On hospital visits, I think we took a long time to look at this. The data seems to show that you're right, hospital visits go up, but it's only because no one, hospital visits associated with scooter use increases, but no more than that of new bicycle options mainly because nobody was checking this type of data when there were no scooters. But they proved to be as safe as bicycles in other cities in terms of the data. And we're still watching that and we're, again, regulating them like bicycles and having to be able to control their speed, which is a different component. Risk management created our indemnity clause, it is the same one in our current bike share program that has been in effect and has been used by that program and Mr. Cog. And so I won't speak for city legal or risk, but I'll say that they developed it and gave us that language based on the existing one in the bike share that we helped to create. And for the ADA issues that Mr. DiRaco and you addressed, we agree. And that's why, and at your encouragement, we dedicated the fees, the right-of-way fees that these companies would pay into funds that would limit them to bicycle and sidewalk improvements so that we could expedite those improvements as necessary. And so I understand that those are real concerns. We could go through an exhaustive list of the departments that weighed in on this over the summer. But I think we addressed those and I, at least as we left planning department last, feel that they felt they could begin the permit issuing process and had the sufficient triggers in the language and the legislation that would allow them to pause or suspend bad actors and to regulate these in a well-regulated way. And so I don't feel that a deferral or a moratorium is necessary at this point. I feel like we're ready to see what happens here, so, thank you.
Are there any questions regarding items B or G? Councilor Borrego and then Councilor Benton?
I understand Councilor Benton's concerns. I did meet with this vendor and one of the questions that I asked was if they would meet with the police department and sort of get a feel for how enforcement could be managed. And I don't see any police officers in the crowd this evening, maybe they were here earlier. So I just wonder what maybe the vendor could come forward and discuss. I think they had a meeting with police. And, because I, it is a motorized, you know, vehicle. And I see it in similar light as a motorcycle in a sense, although it's probably not the same, in the same venue, but it is motorized. And so I'd like to know what your, thank you for coming forward.
So I did take your direction. We met, I didn't have so much time, so I met the public service director. We had a phone call with the public service director and went over some safety issues today. Basically, I told him what works in other cities. So we would do PSA with your city, your police department, public service announcement on knowing the rules of the road that Albuquerque would come up with. We would do, like we do outreach to the police community and ask them, like, what do you guys want to see? What do you, how can we help? I'm the community manager for the city, contact me whenever it's needed. So for instance, the number one thing we hear is, police officers, it's not their number one concern. There's other issues that are more concerning than pulling someone over to ride on a sidewalk on a scooter going 10 miles per hour. But nonetheless, we make those connections in the community before we launch.
And Mr. Rail, do you have a comment?
Sorry about that. Mr. President, members of the council, obviously, we've looked at the ordinance and we do have, just want to make sure that we're all clear. It's going to take us some time to come up with all the regulatory structure to ensure that we're doing this in a responsible manner. So in essence, it may take us maybe 30 days to get all of the regulations and everything in place. So assuming that you all want to make sure we're clear on that. The other piece I would just bring to your attention, every time we have a new system in place where we're actually having to regulate a use, especially in the right-of-way, I know the interest is always in putting the fees collected into infrastructure improvements, but just want to make sure that we all sort of know that it may take us additional staff time to do some of this work. And oftentimes, that piece of it, the operating side, is not, you know, put together as well. So in this particular ordinance, obviously, the fees go to infrastructure improvements, which obviously helps us with all the issues that we've just described. But just want to make sure we know that it's additional staff time to do the regulatory work and to manage the process. And it's an ongoing process, not just within the planning department, but also within municipal development because of their regulatory work on the right-of-way as well. But I think I just wanted to make sure we had those points out there so you all would be aware that it will take us a bit of time to get this done.
Thank you. Councilor Benton?
So I'll just repeat my question, I guess this is to the city attorney. So what is the city's responsibility with regard to these, this new form of transportation and the state of good repair of our roadways and sidewalks?
President Sanchez of Councilor Benton, could you clarify the last part of the question?
Okay, so if I'm walking down a sidewalk and it's, it's in bad repair and I trip and fall, I would sue the property owner with whom, that fronts that property, that sidewalk, am I correct?
President Sanchez, Councilor Benton, that's one route you could go, yes?
I mean, the state of good repair of any sidewalk is considered to be responsibility of the owner of the property fronting that sidewalk. That's a city ordinance, so you can look it up. Same kind of thing with regard to an alley, an alley in bad repair or something that's going wrong with an alley is responsibility of the owner who shares the frontages along those alleys. If a bike lane or just a regular traffic lane in the absence of a bike lane is not in perfect repair and a person on one of these devices falls and injures themselves, we recognize that the company is, the user requires a waiver of liability for the company that's operating the service. But I'm asking about the city in these kind of situations of the state of good repair of our roadways, which is always an ongoing issue. And we are sued on a fairly regular basis by users of the roadway saying that we haven't met our obligations there. So this would be, I'm asking, is there any way for the city to be protected under that situation from liability?
President Sanchez, Councilor Benton, the indemnity clause and the hold harmless in the legislation is one level of protection, but we can certainly explore additional levels of protection as we go through the regulatory process.
Okay. And then, as was stated, APD is not here, but I wanted to hear from APD about their willingness to enforce the traffic code for an entire new mode of people who would otherwise probably be walking or taking a bus or something like that. And then the, when we discussed the traffic code, when we had the amendment, yeah, we had a question for APD with regard to enforcement of the shared vehicle in particular, the example that's sort of before us, at least as far as immediate implementation, are these electric scooters and shared scooters and so forth and their operation on city sidewalks and on bike lanes and city roadways. In the absence of a bike lane, a bicycle has the right to take a lane and to continue on the roadway long as they abide by certain rules. Same is going to go apparently for these scooters, which can only... Same is going to go, apparently, for these scooters, which can only go 15 miles an hour. But bicycles don't go a whole lot faster than that, unless you're a real hotshot bicyclist. But in that 15 mile an hour maximum speed in the public roadway and these provisions and these new kind of vehicles, is APD's traffic unit prepared to actually enforce something like this?
Chief of Staff Ross?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Benton, appreciate the question. The police department will effectively enforce or we plan to enforce any ordinance that's on the books through the city of Albuquerque.
Understood.
Specifically, depending on what the ordinance specifically says, that's how we'll address the areas of operation and enforcement.
And of our new officers that are coming online at a much faster pace, so thank you for that, and thanks to the administration and counselors for supporting that. How is that going with regard to building up the traffic enforcement?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Benton, when we get the officers through the training academy, whether it's the lateral academy or the cadet class, once they get off their OJT, then we'll look at our numbers to see where we'll be able to appropriate officers into other fields like traffic or homicide or CACU, crimes against children. We can't do that until we get those numbers through OJT. And we like to project that everyone that is going to get through the academy will get through OJT, but we'll project those numbers in those spots at the end of OJT.
So in the meantime, when people aren't on a really urgent call, then they're expected to take some time to enforce the traffic code?
Yes, yes. And we call it unaccounted time on not a call for service. Then they do look for, whether it's traffic enforcement or engagement into the community, depending on what area command that they're assigned to.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's go back. Any other questions?
Mr. President, I have another question for Planning Department staff, or Mr. Campbell.
Director Campbell?
We had a chance to talk about this briefly. Staffing-wise for this, Mr. Campbell? Because I regularly get complaints that we're not getting the job done entirely on zoning code enforcement and certain, especially zoning code enforcement more than anything. But how do you see us staffing the enforcement of at least the parts of this that you will be enforcing?
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, it probably will fall to our field service people, the in-code enforcement, to be out there and keeping an eye on this and reporting in violations as they occur. I also would defer to my colleagues in the administration because this really isn't, I mean, inasmuch as the bill says planning, we're dealing with public rights of way, which traditionally are the DMD's responsibility. And so this will be one of those, and that's, it's important for us to realize that these are really cross-jurisdictional kinds of issues that are of first impression. If you're talking about trails, and then you're talking about the park system. And so part of the reason that it's, that we need to be rigorous about coming up with a regulatory scheme is because this really does cross a number of different of our departments, our silos, and it's not simply to be done by one. And I think I'd welcome, you know, some help from my colleagues in the administration, but we really are already talking about this as being a multitude of departments that need to deal with this. And therefore, a proper regulatory scheme is going to take a little time.
Chief Operating Officer Rail?
Mr. President, that simply further, you know, emphasizes the need for us to have some time to put all of the regulatory issues together and to have all the departments working together because it does cross many departmental issues. And so, again, if this bill does get passed tonight, you know, I just want to, as I said earlier, I just want to make sure you all know and the companies that are interested in being in active, in Albuquerque, you know that it's going to take us some time to put the regulatory structure together and ensure that everyone's educated in terms of how this will be rolled out.
Counsel Benton?
Mr. President, thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Rail and Mr. Campbell. And again, I, you know, I guess you're, in a way, responding to the DMD aspect of the question as well. I mean, DMD has parking enforcement. Maybe that enters into this. It's certainly, if we ever actually put, you know, get the bike lanes issue resolved, then parking enforcement would be dealing with that. Parking and bike lanes is what I meant by that. But, and then there's also the, it was mentioned, the multi-use trails. You don't have to come down here, Mr. Simon, but you could wave one way or the other. Isn't it true that you cannot operate motorized vehicles on multi-use trails? That's correct. So we want to make that really clear right away. When we say wherever a bicycle, whatever applies the rights to, as a bicyclist go, that there's a disconnect there. So we need to be really careful about that when we talk about this. That it's not, motorized vehicles, it's a problem, actually, on our multi-use trails, that people illegally using them that way. But that should be, we should be cognizant of that. Okay, you know, the, I would love to see a way where we could be very specific. And I think, from what I can see in the legislation, it's implicit that they cannot operate until such time as those regulations are in effect. I mean, I would say regulations and enforcement mechanisms. I mean, the city needs to, somebody can correct me here, I do the sponsor administration, but the city needs to strongly affirm that until such time as we not only have the regulatory scheme, but the enforcement scheme in place, that they are not to operate. Is that the case, the way it's written presently?
Counselor Davis?
Mr. President, thank you. And Counselor Benton, let me respond to those two things very quickly. On your question earlier about insurance, that a city attorney was kind enough to mention. In addition to the indemnity, there is an additional clause and a requirement of additional proof of liability that Risk Management added as a sort of a backup in case the first doesn't work. And they ask us to just point that out. And to clarify on the use of the fees, just for Mr. Rail, Planning Department did bring these up, and so did other city departments. And so one of the First Amendment that we sort of ran through really quickly because it was sort of agreed-upon language, expanded the use of the fees, not just for infrastructure improvements, but also for the operation and maintenance of the program. And we think that's sufficient enough to allow the department to staff appropriately as necessary. But we didn't want to earmark a dollar amount because we're not sure what it'll take yet. And we gave some flexibility there. The two things on this, as far as enforcement, that are different than, say, the misuse of a bicycle, you know, these are the companies that have them, they, we are proposing here that they pay not only a licensing fee upfront, a permitting fee, but a per-day right-of-way use fee for every vehicle. And the company has to have the ability to respond with local people in Albuquerque, not in California, on the ground. They have to be able to respond to complaints in real time. And if they fail to do so, we can suspend their entire permit for failure, conditional, continued failures to follow our rules. That's a much more enhanced and more aggressive form of enforcement than we have for any other type of transportation in the city right now, including our own PACE program, which voluntarily does that, but doesn't necessarily have the rules for it. That said, I appreciate that. I do think it's, as we've heard today, we explicitly didn't write a lot of the permitting language because we want to give all those departments time. And I'm confident that our administration wouldn't issue a permit. They didn't, they thought would create more problems, and they wouldn't do so until they work through those enforcement issues. But I think implicit in the way that these programs are designed and the fees and fines for violation implies that you cannot get a permit until we have established and put those into place. And so I felt confident that we had gotten to that place and after many, many rounds of meetings and language from those departments. And so I realize that there's some anxiety here. It's something new. It's something untested. Some cities have done this very poorly without rules. We spent, our staff, and I'm grateful for them, has spent all summer talking to cities like Denver and Santa Monica that had bad experiences and then got it right. This is modeled on their work and modeled on national legislation. And honestly, some of the most aggressive in the country in terms of enforcement and fines and how much, how quickly they have to follow up. And we couldn't find another city where we had as much flexibility with the permits for revocation or suspension in terms of our flexibility. And so we think we hold the cards in this one in terms of how we regulate this. And I think we are at a place where we've resolved as many of those as we can until we start working between departments to sort out those regulatory schemes. And so I would urge your support.
That was your closing. We have a motion and a second for committee substitute O-29 as amended. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, those opposed? That carries on an eight-to-one vote. Counselor Benton, Adam Jean?
I'll move R. 1885, if there's a second.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? That motion dies because of a lack of a second. We are going to go to item E, and then we'll come back to item C. That is Counselor Vice President Harris and Borrego, R. 69. That is utilizing available general fund balance to add a lateral police officer class, providing an appropriation to APD in the general fund in fiscal year 2019.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a due pass of item R. 1869.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Borrego.
And thank you, Mr. President. Is there anyone sent up to speak? Okay, so maybe we'll have, should we have the administration talk about the bill before counselors debater talk about it? Is the Chief of Staff here?
Ms. Nyar?
You have to go.
Chief of Staff Ross?
And I understand that the Chief of Staff has another engagement he has to go to. So maybe we can get, if you have any questions for him, please get him out of the way.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members. This will, this funding is for a lateral academy due in November. This will fund new lateral police officers, the equipment necessary to equip them with. This will also put an additional 30 to 40, depending on, you know, how it progresses through there, of officers on the street to help transfer some of those positions at the end of OJT to those traffic positions, to those CACU positions, to those homicide positions. But more importantly, just put some more officers out on the street to engage in, with the public, within the community events, and to tackle some of these crime initiatives that we have started. Auto theft is one. Some of the other ones that was mentioned earlier today, we'll have some special operations going on. It's just to increase our numbers. We appreciate the mayor and his staff for addressing the shortage of officers and to reach that 100 each year to increase our staffing. And this money, hopefully, you'll support. And we do appreciate some of the support we've already received. We'll help fund that so we can get started on those numbers and provide more additional officers to protect our public.
Thank you, Chief of Staff Ross. Counsel Harris, and then Counselor Borrego.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. And in terms of our numbers, it looks like that we've been sort of languishing in the low 800s for years. We're up in the mid-800s now. But it looks like we could make a pretty big bump into the 900s here real quick. Is that true?
Yes, that is correct. With this funding and what we plan to ask for come January, we hope to be at our 100 mark. We're about 856 or so now. And we hope to increase it by 100, like the mayor and his administration proposed earlier. And we're on track to do that with this funding. Without this, we will be lacking. But our plans is to increase it by hundreds to get into that 950 or above range.
Okay, and thanks for that. And in terms of the collective bargaining agreement and retirements, it looks like we have a whole lot less officers retiring. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes. Our first, our first couple of months before the collective bargaining agreement went into effect, I want to say we lost about 20. We had about 20 or so separations. Since then, we've just had a very few, probably count them on one hand. And a lot of it is because of that CBA and the great work that everybody put together and that for retention of our officers.
Yeah, I really appreciate that because I know that for many years, it seemed that we gained about 90 officers and lose about 90 officers every year, year after year after year. But if we can get more laterals, get more new cadets, as well as keep those retirements way down, I think that's great news for the city of Albuquerque, and hopefully even get up. My goal is up around 1,200. And hopeful that if all the stars align, we could even be up around 1,000. I think that's possible, although that's not a prediction, I know.
Well, that would be great. And again, it all depends on the funding. It depends on attracting the good quality candidates. But we would hope to get as many in the door as possible, absolutely, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Borrego, and then we will go to Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to remind the council that there was a total of $8.2 million in excess from our gross receipts tax. 5.2 of that went to the helicopter. And the additional 3 million is for this lateral class. And I think it's well-used. And I think it will, as Counselor Harris indicated, will increase the police force. And I think, again, I remind the public that, you know, it's not just about the police officers. We need everyone's help to ensure that we get this crime situation under control. And our community policing also is very important and paramount. So thank you, Officer Ross, for being here this evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
I urge your support.
Counselor Gibson. We're not closing yet, Counselor Borrego. There may be some other comments?
Thank you, Mr. President. So this class is going to start in November, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
That's the, that's the plan, anyway.
Yes, ma'am.
And in the past, we've talked about adding more classes, like, I don't know, a couple of years ago, maybe last year, the year before. But there was some concern about space being available at the academy. So has that been solved?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Gibson, the way that we organize and coordinate our classes, that way to not, to have enough classrooms for each class. We have organized each academy class. That way, they won't overlap into the same classroom or to create congestion or to create a burden on our staff, on our instructors. So the way that we create the classes, the way that the curriculum comes through, we make sure that the burden is not on our instructors, that the classes, whether it's the lateral or the cadet class, get good quality instruction, and it's not rushed. It's not, and it's not pushed upon where they're creating in a tight environment.
So then, is it accurate to say then that you don't have two classes meeting at the same time?
Well, Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Gibson, we can have two classes at the same time, but they were not, not in the same classroom. They will be on different schedules to where they kind of maybe overlap, but not in the same curriculum for the day. We also have a working relationship coming up at the beginning of the year with CNM. And we'll be able to have some classes at CNM along with the rest of the state's officers. It's a satellite academy. And we'll coordinate between them and us in our academies to provide that instruction.
Okay, and if I may?
Go on, proceed.
More here. And is the same then, could the same things be said then about your instructional staff? That you can share them without, without there being a conflict?
The way that we schedule it, ma'am, yes, ma'am. We will schedule it to where they're not in conflict with CNM, if that's what you were asking, or with the basic or an advanced class. Our cadet class goes to, has a basic instructors. Our lateral class has some advanced instructors because they are already certified. So we have a basic division and an advanced training section as well. So there's a little bit of separation there, but they do teach each other's section here and there.
Okay. So how many, how many folks do you have ready to go in November?
Currently, in November, we actually have about 60 in the process. That's not 60 accepted. That's just 60 in the process. We will be looking at, you know, the best of those. But hopefully, we can get around 35 to 45. around 35 to 40 of the best qualified applicants.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a couple of comments, and I personally would first like to thank Chief Guyer for his work on this initiative, and Mayor Keller also, and this council. You know, we've worked very hard to assure that the numbers of the Albuquerque Police Department is increasing. We've had some major challenges over the last eight years. The numbers were going backwards instead of forward. But I think this is critically important to the citizens of our community. And I know that we are looking at 950. Hopefully, the goal will be closer, closer to 1,000 during the end of this fiscal year because it is important that we get more officers on the street, and that they also look at more community-based policing. I know we've tried to do that for a long time, but with the lack of number of officers, it's been a major challenge. And I think it's critically important that we get those numbers up as quickly as possible. I am pleased to see that there was additional revenues that were available through reversions, and not through an increase in the sales tax. But that also is important, you know, that we utilize the resources that we do have available for issues of public safety. Because my number one priority, and I believe the priority of this council, and Mayor Keller and the administration in this community is public safety. And I'm pleased that we are addressing those issues, and we are doing it in a very expeditious fashion. So, thank you, Chief of Staff Ross, for your work. Again, thank you to Chief Guyer for his work, and Mayor Keller.
Now, let's go to Counsel Harris and to Counsel Borrego to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have much to offer, but I just want to say that we are making strides. We're never going to give up, and we're getting better, and we're going to continue. So, thank you. I urge your support.
Counsel Borrego.
Urge your support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve R-69. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Yes? Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Let's go back to item C, and that is going to be myself and Counsel Pena. Counsel Pena, R-62.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is formalizing collaborative effort between the City of Albuquerque and Bernalillo County to preserve Crestview Bluff as a historic urban green area. And I think we have an amendment. I'm not real sure. Amendment number one, which is, oh, I'm sorry, I thought I had.
We have a motion and a second for R-62. Counsel Pena, go ahead and proceed.
Thank you. And then we have an amendment. And the amendment is just clarifying that Crestview Bluff area is an interest, is of interest for purposes of open space and green space. And, you know, I just-
Mr. President, I'm sorry to interrupt, Counsel-
Ms. Nyar, go ahead and proceed.
That amendment passed at committee, so we don't have to-
It did. That's what I was wondering, but I have it here in front of me. So, okay, okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So, I urge your support on this. I think it's just an important, this is a historic area for the City of Albuquerque as a whole. This is, the community's been working on this for a long time. It's, it's the Bluff area, and it's on the other side of Pat Harding Bluff. Have you ever been there? And the spectacular views that you get from there. This is actually even a little bit closer to downtown, and it has some, much of the same views. Neighborhood Association members have been working for, for many years to try to put this parcel together. It's home to, actually, home to the original town of Attrisco. So, you know, I think if there's anything that we have that should be turned into open space, this is it. And I know there were some members from the community who wanted to be here tonight. There was another meeting that they had to be at. And actually, one of the members is on the City of Albuquerque's Open Space Board, and it was just designated a, a priority for the City of Albuquerque. So, I urge your support.
And I have nothing more to say. I think you've been very eloquent in what you've said, and I urge your support. All those in favor of R-62, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Yes? Those opposed, say no. That carries unanimously. We are now under item D, Counsel Davis and Winter, R-65.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll move Autumn, R-1865. It places a temporary reprieve of enforcement regarding the prohibition of barbed wire, et cetera, on businesses. It reflects the conditions prior to the passage of the IDO. Mr. President, I would move R-1865.
We have a motion and a second by Counsel Winter.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just very briefly, just by the way of background, we just, we have heard from folks this evening, and some of us have seen emails, a number of businesses started to receive citations appropriately from the Planning Department for violations of the city's prohibition on the use of barbed wire that was expanded essentially during the IDO. This moratorium simply, with, and thankfully, with the support of the Planning Department, simply places a moratorium on that enforcement for two years to allow businesses time to come into compliance, or to participate in the annual IDO review process to evaluate that. Some businesses rightly pointed out that it would cost thousands of dollars to comply in the 30 or 60-day compliance process, and that given our crime situation, that might not be tenable for everyone right away. And so, this gives them time to come into compliance or participate in a public process that might change the rules, and we're not picking a side either way on that.
Thank you. We have one individual signed up to speak, Robert Vick. Welcome back.
Thank you. Actually, I really don't, I think it's a, I really appreciate Counsel Davis's and Brad Winter's, Counsel Winter's support on this and what they've done. And I really think it's, I think it's great the way that you've already done. There's really nothing else I can say about it. You have a proposal that I've given that kind of just shows my own area, but this is important for all of Albuquerque until the city can control the problem. And I, and I really appreciate your concern, your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vick. Are there any other questions from this council? Counsel Winter to close, and Counsel Davis to close. Counsel Davis. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for R-. Counsel Benton.
Yeah, I have an amendment.
Oh, that's right.
And this, first, I'll ask Mr. Campbell, the, is this, the way it's presently written, the previous prohibition, here's the concern I have, is with regard to abutting residential zones. So, so, we're throwing that whole baby out for two years with the bathwater. To me, I mean, we've, we've had previous issues with razor ribbon, fronting open space, but also in residentially zoned areas. Is this something the city feels is appropriate, abutting a residential zone?
Director Campbell.
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, I'm-
Does the administration support this?
Well, we, I, I will, I will, I will, I will ask the administration to speak.
Yes.
I mean, but from the planning perspective, what we're doing is following what the council has instructed, which is, you know, in-
Right.
Take, take effective action. Now, in the view of the fact that during the summer, this became an issue, and this bill was introduced-
Yes.
We, we, on the instruction of the administration, said, okay, hold off until the council can make decisions as to this policy. It's not baby in bathwater, it's barbed wire. And, and it's not, we're not making aesthetic decisions here, and we're not making policy decisions, but we are trying to follow what the council's direction is.
Ms. Nyar.
Thank you, Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Benton. I mean, I think the, the reality of it is that as long as it's this piece of the planning laws are enforced, they have to enforce them. And every time that they have gone out to enforce them, they've gotten a lot of pushback from the community, saying exactly what you all have been talking about tonight, which is, until we don't have people trying to climb over our fences, we need to continue to have our barbed wire. Now, we understand that there are concerns about children, about wildlife, about all kinds of other things when it comes to barbed wire. And so, we, we, the administration supports this in that it gives us time to, as, as the council has discussed, to revisit the, the regulations if we need to, or to come up with some other solution. But I think we all sort of agree that status quo just needs to break. It's not working.
And, Mr. President, I would agree. However, what I heard from, at least the anecdotal stories about this, was that it had to do with commercially zoned property or public frontage, again, public right-of-way, back to that, public frontage on a, on a right-of-way, that those were the problem areas. I did not hear, at least directly, maybe, maybe anecdotally, somebody's got that, that story as well, or the sponsors might have this. But with regard to abutting residential zones, you know, I do have an amendment. If, if there's not interest in that amendment, then, then we don't need to discuss it. But, but this amendment would, would maintain the, the two-year moratorium on enforcement of this for the commercial zones and for, and for rights-of-way. But it would exclude, it would maintain them as, as not located, abutting a residential zone.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counsel Borrego. Counsel Davis?
I support.
Counsel Harris?
Thanks, and I support this too, but I'm a little concerned about the zoning code could be so darn technical. And I'm wondering if we should maybe defer it for two weeks, or is this going to work just fine? Is there going to be an issue in terms of how this is construed?
Director Campbell.
I've, I've sort of lost the train of thought. You're, you're talking about perhaps deferring this bill. What we have in place is, is an administrative order, if you will, that says we're, we're holding off until the council takes affirmative action on this item. So, we would consider that to still be the status quo until, unless and until the council gives us other instructions.
Counsel Vice President Harris.
Thank you, Director Campbell. And I'm concerned about Counsel Benton's bill. If you just add that language, you think the, the Planning Department would have to look and see how this works, and make sure that there's not going to be issues, and we might need to clarify this, or clarify that, and maybe we should wait and make sure that we do it comprehensively, or think this is just going to work just fine?
Okay, so, as I understand it, the proposal is to amend this such that the, the restriction adjacent to residential zones is no longer in place.
Stays in place, yes.
And therefore, it, what's left is restrictions along public rights-of-way, as, as was stated in the IDO.
Counsel Benton.
And, Mr. President, commercial property to commercial property, or anything other than a residential zone, perhaps Ms. Morris could make sure that that's clear.
Ms. Morris, go ahead and proceed.
Mr. President, Counsel Benson, yes. The, the language that is proposed in Counsel Benson's amendment would bring the language in Counsel Davis's resolution to match that of the rules that were on the books prior to the adoption of the IDO. So, it wouldn't be introducing anything particularly new per se, it would just bring us back to the status quo that we were in before the IDO went into effect.
Counsel Borrego.
I had a question, Mr. Campbell, and I think I know the answer, but, so, in a mixed zone, where you have a residential-commercial zone, how would, how would that be enforced?
I think we're going to, we're, we're going to look at that as the residential zone. I mean, the more restrictive of the code is how we would normally-
Okay, we have floor amendment number one to R-65. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Yes? Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Okay, we're back on the bill. All those in favor of R-65 as amended, signify by saying yes and raise your hand.
Yes.
Yes? Those opposed? That carries unanimously. We are now on the last item on the agenda, item F, that is Counsel Borrego, R-75.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This particular item, if you remember several months, I guess about a month ago or so, the Board of County Commissioners passed an administrative resolution number 2018-63, supporting New Mexico's development of a public option buy-in for healthcare coverage. So, this is basically mirroring that particular resolution, which was passed by the county. And basically, what it is, is a public buy-in for healthcare coverage to ensure affordability and choice. And there is also an amendment to this bill that you received in your packet, which is floor amendment number one, which would, and so, I move, let me first move the bill, R-18-75.
We have a motion and a second. Go ahead and proceed on your amendment.
Okay, the amendment is floor amendment number one. And basically, what it does is it deletes line 28 through 31 on page two. And basically, let's see, lines 28 through 31. And basically, the explanation is that it is deleted to reflect that there is no cost to the city in supporting this bill. And I saw earlier Representative Javier Martinez in the audience, I think he came to support it. And I believe that he will, he would be the sponsor of this at, at the legislature. I don't know if he's still here tonight, but this would basically give New Mexicans an option to have healthcare for those who cannot afford it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for floor amendment number one to R-75. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes.
Yes? Those opposed? That carries unanimously. We're back on the bill. We have four individuals that are signed up to speak, Don Schrader, Lancena, Adrienne Barboa, and Abuko Estrada. Once your name has been called, be prepared to speak and come to the front. I don't believe Don Schrader is still here. Lancena?
Hello, members of the council, and thank you, Mr. President. I shared with you all briefly during the public comment period of some of the struggles that I was facing with stage four cancer. I want to share specifically what struggles those are. In one year, my out-of-pocket expense was $17,000. A chemotherapy deemed the miracle cure for the blood cancer that I have, that did not give me nausea, or kept me from losing my hair, was $1 million for the three milligrams I required. This story is unique to me, and, but thousands of families throughout New Mexico are facing the same struggles and question that I am. So, again, I must question and ask again, in a world where we seek a cure for cancer, what world do we live in when we cannot afford it? I, along with families throughout New Mexico, came together in urging our policymakers to pass a Medicaid buy-in because all New Mexicans need access to affordable, quality healthcare. I became a leader with New Mexico Together for Healthcare to show that our families deserve equal outcomes. And my invitation still extends to everyone, when you're questioning the impact of what Medicaid could do, the Medicaid buy-in, to allow families to buy into a plan that works best for them, I do invite you to go to my chemotherapy sessions in two weeks. So, thank you.
Thank you. Adrienne Barboa.
Thank you, President Sanchez, and members of the council. My name is Adrienne Barboa. I'm the field director for Strong Families New Mexico. We are one of the steering committee members of the New Mexico Together for Healthcare campaign that have been proposing this Medicaid buy-in. We did push and were able to pass, actually, we have, our sponsors legislatively at the state level are Representative Armstrong on the House, and Senator Artizy Pino on the Senate side. So, we were able to, with the encouragement of families, and like you've heard from tonight, pass the memorial. We also, of course, there was no appropriations with it, so we were able to secure the funding to make that study actually happen. It is in place right now. New Mexico Sound Law and Poverty Partnership for Community Action, and Health Action New Mexico, and Strong Families New Mexico are steering the campaign. We've brought together our strengths and resources to make sure we uncover every rock, talk to every person, get the support, ask all those questions that maybe we didn't cover or get answered, to have the kind of quality healthcare we would need in ECA. So, we're really trying to get that. I just wanted to let you all know that we've already passed resolutions, McKinley County Commission, Sunland Park City Council, where actually, two of the councilor members at that hearing actually asked us how they could apply, because they themselves as council members don't have access to quality healthcare. One of the council members said she owns a childcare business in which she's not able to really afford childcare, healthcare for her employees. So, we just ask you to- afford childcare, healthcare for her employees. So we just ask you to send this off and we encourage you to join in. We'll have stakeholder meetings across the state and we'd love to have your participation in that. Thank you for your support today.
Thank you. And the last speaker on this agenda item is Abuko Estrada.
Hi there, Mr. President, counselors. Abuko Estrada, I'm the supervising attorney for the healthcare team at the New Mexico Center on Law and Poverty. Really, all, all New Mexicans are deserving of healthcare. However, as you all are aware, costs have become unsustainable for our families. 180,000 New Mexicans continue to have no insurance option and many thousands more are considered what is underinsured, meaning they're able to maybe pay the cost of premiums, but they can't keep up with the out-of-pocket costs for copays and deductibles. So what the New Mexico Together for Healthcare campaign has come together to do with local policymakers such as yourselves is to really find a state-based solution to providing affordable, quality coverage option for our families. As was mentioned, many other local governments have passed resolutions similar to the one before you, supporting the Medicaid buy-in study, which is moving forward and should result in legislation for the 2019 legislative session. But those counties include Bernalillo County, Sunland Park, City of Sunland Park, City of Anthony, the All Pueblo Council of Governors, McKinley County, and Las Cruces, Santa Fe County, City of Santa Fe, and Navajo Nation are all looking into passing this in the near future. In terms of the resolution that's also before you, I happened to draft it. And so if you have any legal or technical questions, I'm happy to answer those for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion with this council? Seeing none, let's go to the Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I just, boy, I understand the issue. And I guess the council is just supporting something that happens at the state. But have any of the details ever been worked out on this, on a state-funded program? And where's the money coming at, coming from? And just some of those. I mean, it's just, we're, we're asking to support something that, never seen any details worked on it.
Mr. Estrada.
Mr. President, Counselor Winter. So we're in the middle of the study itself. And so what the resolution is asking you to do is just simply support the study. And then the study is going to move into two phases. One, that's actually outlining the different options that are available to New Mexico as to how to design this. You would think it's simple since it's called a Medicaid buy-in, but there's nuances in how to design it. And so the first phase is going to look into that. And then phase two of the study, which should be done later this year, probably around early December, will go into the cost to individuals, providers, as well as the state budget.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is just asking, just for support for this study to see if it will work or not?
Mr. President, Counselor Winter, that's correct.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion. Counselor Borrego to close.
I urge your support. I think this would help a lot of individuals that are struggling to make it. And I think that it's possible in terms of, you know, a public buy-in. So thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for R-75 as amended. All those in favor, raise your hand and say yes. Yes, those opposed? That carries unanimously. And if there is no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned.